Thank you and welcome to our first meeting of the 2019. I almost said school year, the 2019 year. Happy New Years to everyone.
You want to serve on that board?
I'm sorry?
You want to serve on that board?
No, no, no. He asked me if I want to serve on that board, I do not. Looks like we have a pretty brief meeting this evening. I trust you all got the email about the one item being pulled. Nonetheless, we do have a little bit of business here. First item, of course, is items from council. Does anyone have anything they need to bring up? Nothing, okay. And for once, I don't have anything either, so. Okay, well, we'll move straight into citizens communication. Anyone who'd like to come up and address the council, please do so now. And what we ask out of courtesy to others is to limit your comments to five minutes or less. Just give us your name for the record.
My name's Michael Bondrum. This is my third meeting for dangerous dogs and nothing's been done. I talked to the trailer park manager on December the 31st, but instead of helping me, he wrote me up and said, "I have a water leak," you know, which I don't have a water leak. It's water leaking from the middle of the road and everything. And anyway, I had to leave the premise and sleep in my car somewhere because they bark all night. And he's friends with the people that own these dogs, so he's not going to do nothing. But I did a deed search and I found out who owns the property. So he's an attorney in Houston. So I tried to call and all I was able to do is speak to his secretaries and everything to give messages. And I just, I'm tired of it. You know, I can't sleep at night. This has been going on all year. And animal control, so they want to help, but they have to get orders from the chief of police to give them the okay because he don't want animal control on the property because he's friends with the people that own these dogs. And I was just wondering if anyone can help me or what to do or if someone could call the lawyer that owns the property and see if he can work something out or maybe the trailer park manager needs to be retrained or something. And it's always the same. It's the rottweiler, he stays on a pickup truck between 16 and 17 and he just watches you. And he's waiting for that person to come so he can stalk him and everything. This is every night. And the trailer park manager won't do nothing, won't get involved, won't help. And I'm tired of his patronizing me, you know, not an honest person and everything. I just want help. And I don't know what to do. You know, he kicked animal control off the property. I've set traps from them and they just paid 170 and get the dogs back. And I just need someone's help. If it's county commissioner's court or if it's the lawyer that owns the property, if he can take a day off and help or something or retrain the property manager or something.
Well, Michael, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I did leave the message with the county commissioner, but over the holidays, I didn't hear back. And so that's my fault. I should have called him back.
No, it's not your fault.
But, no, well, it's okay. I know I told you I would and I still can. We had brought up last time you were here about municipal court filing. And I know you spoke to the chief before the meeting. I saw y'all.
Yes, sir.
Is there, maybe he can update us too here in a minute. Have you made any progress in filing directly in municipal court? That's my question.
Now, I wanted to speak to the city attorney. He did call me Friday like he promised, but Monday was Christmas Eve and I think they were closed. And I decided to let everyone enjoy their holidays because I've been trying to get help for the last year and nothing happened. So once another week, you know.
I think you filing in municipal court is probably the best thing in that we need to make sure that happens then.
Okay.
And of course, things do move slowly, so.
Well, it's been a year and nothing's been done, so you know, once another year.
Not a year talking to us. Hopefully, I know you've talked to us several times, but we'll.
Yes, sir.
We need to get that municipal court filing. I think that's the best thing for you on your behalf.
Okay.
And if the city attorney is the proper person to advise you, then he needs to do that. And we'll make sure, he's out of town, not here tonight, but we'll make sure he does that again, calls you back.
And I would, I would like for everyone to warn the police officers when they come there because they're coming there almost every day for something. You know, it's not a safe place. And to warn them about the rottweiler stalking everyone on the pickup truck, you know, on a trailer 16 and 17. And also, the dog is pregnant, so it's going to have puppies. So now we're going to have six dangerous dogs and everything. And it's fixing to deliver. And my problem with talking to the people directly, I'm scared of the people. I'll be, I mean, I would speak to the ones who own the dogs in person as long as there's a police officer. And I'd be willing to pay a lawyer, you know, $100 to mediate something, you know, where I can get some sleep, you know. I can't sleep. They're barking all night and chasing cars. And if a police officer had to use deadly force to kill one of these dogs and they said, "Oh, they're sweet," I would testify, "These dogs are not sweet." I'd be on the side of the police officer. But I think that it's a safety issue because they go to schools, you know. They don't just hang out. It's not just a trailer park issue. They go to schools, you know, the old stromand and the patio. I got pictures of them in schools and it's like, it seems like there'd be an answer. And I know I can't force the, you know, trailer park manager to do his job. That's his choice not to do it, you know. So there's not much I can say other than that.
Okay. Well, let's pursue it in court. We'll make sure the city attorney gets back with you again and.
Okay.
Guides you through that process.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Citizens communication still open? If anyone else would like to speak, now's the time. Again, just your name for the record and try to limit to five minutes if you could.
My name's Jim Lucas and I represent the Vasquez's who are here today. And I think the Vasquez's missed a meeting with you, Mayor. And I got involved in this matter. It involves some property that is actually scheduled for demolition. And the specific property location is 1307 Julius. My purpose here today is to inform you, well, one, I was invited by the city attorney to come to at today's meeting because I requested to reschedule a meeting with you that I think the Vasquez's had missed. And he invited me to this meeting in all honesty. And I had been in contact with my clients because I know that they had not properly responded to the notices. And I had got them to work rather quickly on a counterproposal because I know the city has taken bids on the demolition, somewhere a little over $7,300. They have acquired a contract, they have paid partially on the contract to try to save this property, to restore this property. And it's only about $2,000 more than the cost of demolition will be. The problem is, I don't know when and if the demolition is scheduled. Last time I talked to the city attorney, he said it could happen at any time. And I tried to reach Mr. Breones to see if there had been a scheduling and I don't know. But I provided the city attorney with the contract, with the recommendations of repairs. And I think I'm here on behalf of the Vasquez's as well as a contractor who's present, that he could start refurbishing this property immediately. I will forward what information I have to Mr. Breones, your code enforcement officer, as well as the contact because the construction contractor amounts to make sure he puts his property back to code and whatever violations you find, he wants to make sure that's included in the repairs. So my main concern is trying to not have this property, any contracts be executed on for the demolition of this property. Try to continue to contact your city attorney as well as your code enforcement officer and have them start making the repairs necessary to satisfy the city. And I really have nothing further than that to put to it other than I know that these repairs won't start till they know that they're not, the property's not going to be demolished in the middle of the repair. I can tell the city that. So that is where I'm at at this point. And that's all I have for the council.
It's, yeah, I understand your comments and we, it's not on our agenda, so we can't debate it or discuss it amongst ourselves necessarily, but it sounds like your course of action is correct. And I understand that unless it's brought to code, you can correct me or anyone else. There is no date of demolition as of this time until this body moves on it. And it's not on our agenda.
Do you, well, it was on the agenda last time because we thought you were coming last time to speak. And so the demolition has been kind of put in a stay position because the appeals timeline has run. So we put it on the agenda for council to make a decision whether you wish to allow the construction to happen and a timeframe for that to happen. And so we'll need to put it back on the 15th agenda so you guys can have that conversation. But right now, the demolition has been, is in a holding pattern until this body can make a decision.
And that's all I'm here for. And I think that's the reason your city attorney invited me. And I didn't know about the last meeting, so I apologize or I would have been here. I was not aware that one had been scheduled. So that's all I have for the council.
We will put it on the January 15th agenda.
And is it at the same time I take, at the same location?
Yes, sir, it is, 5 o'clock.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your help and appreciate your listening to me.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, citizens communication still open? If anyone else would like to speak about anything, now would be the time.
Good evening. How are y'all?
Hi.
I really don't want to be here this evening, but I feel like I have no choice. Oh, I'm sorry. I feel like I don't have a choice. I've lived around this surrounding area all my life, Refugio County, Victoria County, all my 55 years. Born in Port Leveque County. I sent the mayor, Jeff Bachnight, I've sent a letter to the police chief. Let's see. Y'all are the three main people that I've sent. Oh, and probably one may have went out just to Victoria City Council.
Ma'am, just your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Charlotte Renee Fox.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. A little bit nervous too.
That's okay.
All right. So first, the reason I want to add, I want to say though, is that maybe I'm not understanding about the city ordinance on noise or when there's loud music or what have you in homes, apartments, wherever you live. I was just told that if it's not loud music, that, you know, it's from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And it's, you know, that's that. I don't, I really think that if someone is keeping you up 24 hours a day or if they're waking you up at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning, something needs to be done. There should be some type amendment. That is unacceptable behavior. And if you are a public servant for the city, it shouldn't be biased. So when I start to complain, which I have made, like several phone calls to the police department when I started becoming afraid, you know, and it was becoming unbearable as I was told to do to call, this person became angry. He and his significant other became very angry. And he tried to intimidate me with his, in his police uniform. I explained all this to the police department and they, and the investigation. No one has gotten back to me on this. Now, this particular incident, when he drove up in his truck, he could have went into his apartment. But instead, he decided to let me walk past him and then he come up behind me and started taunting me and just started saying things that he had no business saying. Unacceptable things like, "What are you doing? What are you saying?" You know? And in a very unpleasant way. Now, fast forward with this been going on for all these months, 12/29/18. He and his significant other decide to come back to the premises and I'm going to walk my dog outside and all the noise that they do make when they do come to let me know that they're there. He starts calling me names again. And she starts taunting me like wanting to fight me, calling me psycho, egging me on. And then he want to pull his baton. Now, I called the police, they didn't show up. I could be laying out in that field somewhere, not standing right here for 2019. I feel like my life is in danger because even though he has moved and everything that I have seen and how angry he has gotten and how he's acted toward me and I haven't done anything to this person, hadn't said a word to him, he's taunting me. And the Victoria Police Department failed me on the 29th. Nobody called me back. Nobody came and checked. I'm an American citizen. My nationality is everything. I've got everybody in my family, Mexican, black, white, Indian, everything, including Now, the internal affairs, Jason Turner seems to think, "Oh, he's not going to do anything." He's threatening a man's life. He's threatening to take a man's life. So I'm standing here. I don't know what he going to do to me. And so I'm asking you all, y'all run the city, to vet your candidates better. This man is angry. And I know how he's looking at me when he comes toward me. The girlfriend in between this, she tried to jump me. I look at those little kids. She has kids to live for. And if I hadn't closed my door, one of us may not be standing here. And yes, I had a fit with the police because I told him, "Somebody's going to be standing over somebody's casket crying if this man don't leave me alone." Most people won't come up here and talk about it, but you won't have to wonder what has happened if you all do not get this man some help. There's a problem over there. And I shouldn't have to call five and six times. And the day I do call, when I see him with his baton, even though he's not on patrol and I haven't done anything, he could have beat me to death. And nobody was there, but that's okay.
Ms. Fox, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. We'll check it out.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Citizens communication still open? If anyone else would like to address us this evening? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close citizens communication. And let's see, what do we have? We've removed item C1. And we're left with the consent agenda. Does anyone need any clarification on C1? We got an email about why.
I sent an email out this afternoon explaining that there are some procedural issues with that particular item. We'll be putting on the 15th agenda, including notification to certain property owners and timelines and deadlines. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them for y'all.
So basically, it resets the clock?
Yes. No, it does not reset the clock.
Okay.
The, we haven't actually started, you mean the clock from when it begins to the 90 days? If we're not addressing it tonight, then we don't start that clock at all.
Thank you.
It's just too early to do it this evening. Would that be a true statement? No, never mind. I don't need to complicate things. I know it's, okay. Okay, well, having said that, we'll just go straight to the consent agenda. We have just two items.
Item D1 is approval of minutes of regular meeting of December 18th, 2018.
Oh, one more.
D2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with Superior LLC, formerly Sun Guard Public Sector, to add data conversion services in the amount of $131,440 and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, those items passed. So now we have is just a couple of city manager reports.
And I'll do the first one and I'll ask April to come out in front and Becky and April to come up where we're recognizing the city secretary's office for receiving the Texas Department of Health and Human Services Vital Statistic Award, which is the five-star recognition, but we received the exemplary award, and I'll have a hard time with that word tonight, which is very unique in a sense. And I want to point out what it takes to get there because there's only 33 registrars in the state of Texas that received this award out of 350-something. So it's, you know, around 9% of the registrars in Texas are able to receive this and that's an extra special recognition. And we've been receiving these type awards since 1999, but this is only our seventh one to receive at this level. And the way we do this is, and I'll read this, but we register 100% of the birth records within one business day. We average 10 or less days to register death records. Under their security requirements, the search to print ratio is 75%, which means that when they're searching for somebody's birth record, 75% of the time, they're getting the right record printed and not having misprints on the records. But, and they also have to attend some training. It's, this is a difficult process to do. And these ladies do a great job for our community and they're the registrar for the entire county, not just the city. So they're to be commended for this. And I know OC can probably take a quick picture with the mayor and recognition of this. And thank you for a job well done. So the last item on the agenda is the Boot Fest report. And Joel, is Joel going to do that, OC? Okay, come on, Joel.
Thank you very much, counsel. And I believe at this time, OC, would we have the video that we were going to show? I think we might start off with that, a new concept that OC's office put together this year, so we'll play that quickly.
Hi, I'm Amy Vosik and I love Boot Fest because not only can you get beer, you have a live concert, all for free, and food such as barbecue and Chick-fil-A. We love the 80s, so all the bands out here tonight are awesome. So we're having a marvelous time tonight. So y'all come out and join us.
We love Boot Fest because the drinks are awesome and the music is great.
Because the ice cream and the band.
Okay, just a minute, let me think.
I'd be at Boot Fest, show off my Astros gear, go Astros. I like to drink good beer.
Oh, you're not, you're not taping me right now, are you?
My name is Sydney and I like it because it's so much fun and it's loud and there's a bunch of people and there's so many things to do and that's it.
Well, I like to do the Boot Fest. Why? Because, you know, it's a lot of fun, a lot of fun.
And my favorite thing about Boot Fest is probably just the community getting together, having a really good time with everybody out here and enjoying the company.
Oh, I like Boot Fest because I get to be with my friends and I get to eat a lot of food.
Hi, I'm Reagan Gabber and I love Boot Fest for the music. Pew, pew, pew.
And the music's amazing.
The music is awesome.
Yeah, the music is amazing.
Yeah.
I like Boot Fest because it's really fun, like they play music and all that and the food too.
And we love Boot Fest for the music.
I like the food.
And the fun and the camaraderie.
Come here real quick. Zina, I'm going to be on channel 15.
Why do y'all want to be, why do y'all want to be?
That's right, we get to see everybody.
It's like a family reunion.
That's right. Irene Henrichs from Victoria.
Cheryl Nace from wherever.
And what I love about Boot Fest is all the rides and being able to help people out.
This is my first year?
Oh, my God. No, we come every year, every year.
I came because I knew Irene was going to be here.
It's awesome and everybody needs to come.
What I like about Boot Fest is I get to see a lot of people in my community, my fans and stuff, you know what I'm saying? So I like the, I like the food too, the food. It's fun, you know, come, come get out here and enjoy.
Or come here next year or right now, tomorrow.
Right now, whenever.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah, it's amazing.
And most of all, we enjoy the beer, don't we?
Sure we do, yeah.
It's my good sign.
Oh, my gosh.
That's some of Josh's handwork.
Well, as you can see from the video, we had another great event, especially from a visitor experience standpoint, this being the eighth run of the festival. And breaking down a little bit about, as usual, our hot funds disclaimer. We use hot funds for Boot Fest 2018 and which can only be used to increase overnight hotel stays as with many of the things at the CBB. And, and the goals for Boot Fest, you know, as it's been established over the years, is to increase overnight hotel rooms and other economic benefits for the city, hold the city's festival in downtown Victoria and provide a safe, high-quality customer experience for citizens and overnight attendees, providing free music and entertainment for all, everyone, all socioeconomic groups. You saw that video, there was a really great diverse group of people, ages and everything attending Boot Fest in downtown Victoria. Here are some crowd shots from the main stage at Boot Fest. And as you can see, this year, we had a really great attendance increase on Friday night very early. The Rock Night was very well received. It was a lot of fun. It was some great bands and a great crowd that was out there. And you see it Friday at 10:00 p.m., it was still a very large crowd. And the crowd from the year before was then at that point pretty, a little larger and closer to what we had this year. This is Saturday at 8:00 p.m. 2017, it was a little denser. And if you may recall that day, we did get some rain. We got some rain in downtown. This is really the first Boot Fest that we've had rain in Victoria. We didn't get very much downtown, just about a tenth of an inch or so between 11:00 and noon, but there was quite a bit of thunder showers going on throughout the day in Victoria. So we think that had an effect on our attendance. And as you see there, again, the crowd was just a little bit lighter. You know, great entertainers put on a great performance, but we did have a little bit lighter of a crowd there on Saturday late as well. Looking at the Boot Fest attendance numbers, those pictures kind of tell the story a bit. Friday night, 2017, we had about 3,500 to 4,500. 2018, a little bit more, an increase of a couple of hundred. But you do see that drop off on Saturday night from 2017, from the 8,000 to 9,000, to 2018 to quite a, quite a drop, 3,250 to 4,250. And that's our, just aggregates of those figures in total crowd, 7,000 to 9,000. Now, these are educated guest estimates taken at peak times through the system, through the Victoria County Office of Emergency Management. They have a great system in place. But again, those are best estimates. And as I mentioned, we did experience significant rainfall in the Victoria area for the first time of presenting Boot Fest. So we may believe that had a factor on attendance. Our vendors, again, did very well. We had some great vendors out there. Average gross sales reported by all Boot Fest vendors, our food vendors averaged between 2,500 to 5,000 in gross sales. And we, we survey our food vendors and merchandise vendors after the event to see, see how they did. And the same thing with the merchandise, because the merchandise, you know, they, there's, there's more of them, so they do a little less, but, but still pretty healthy numbers as terms of gross sales. Economic benefits of Boot Fest, you know, that's money that we spent with local Victoria businesses, whether it be in chain places, ordering supplies or, you know, local entertainers. businesses, whether it be in chain places, ordering supplies, or, you know, local entertainers, you know, the service that provides the Jumbotron, things like that. We do try to use a lot of local businesses to, to provide Boot Fest services, tents, tent rentals, things like that. Our entertainer recap, we did have 15 performing, performing acts. We had four acts on Friday night on the main stage, four acts on Saturday night on the main stage, we did have five acts on the gazebo, as long as, as long as, as well as bringing back the, the Tripp Roper and the Victoria ISD Ballet Folklorico. We did have the eight rides in the Kids Corral, that was of course free as always. We did have some, a great, nice entertaining acts in the Kids Corral, and our car show was a success. You know, we, they, they just kind of got set up and the rain came down on the car show and, and everybody hung around. We had about 78 entries, a very good show there and really appreciative of those guys for coming out and staying out after it rained. We did, and again, with the washers tournament, we had about 20 teams and I was very surprised to see, you know, it started raining on those guys and they didn't leave. There wasn't much cover for them. So they hung around and, and they played and that was sponsored by Moonshine Drinkery and they did a great job organizing that for us. And a lot of those guys just hung out, they got soaked wet and they, they kept on playing. We had seven Western crafters in Daleon Plaza providing some great, also Western-themed entertainment for our crowd on Saturday. Food vendors, we had 27 vendors. We did have a few no-shows, so we had 30 paying vendors and those 27 food vendors filled up 28 spaces. We did have one vendor, KB's Barbecue always buys two spaces, he's got a pretty big setup. And then merchandise vendors, we had 44 vendors filling 58 spaces. Some of those merchandise vendors do purchase two spaces, they have a 24 by 12 space. So that's why you see the vendor count a little lower than the spaces count, but another great showing of, and variety of vendors. Our shuttle bus service that ran from the Patty Dodson Health Center, that ran on Friday throughout the event, 5:30 p.m. to 12:30 a.m. And Saturday, 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 a.m. And our total ridership was down a little bit, but still a pretty good number, 2,034 riders. That is a free shuttle bus service and it is a really great service for people to use. We did have a softball tournament again in conjunction with Boot Fest at the youth sports complex, and that is from Cindy Coward Sports Events, and 17 non-local teams, 15 local teams, and that's 197 room nights. Do, we believe, you know, Boot Fest is a great draw for those teams to come because it gives them something to do in some downtime between games, you know, trying to take a whole team out somewhere where you may have to pay an entry fee, can get pretty expensive. So Boot Fest is a great entertainment option for those teams. Our 5K did very well this year, the DTAR Healthcare System 5K, 274 runners, that thing really filled up. It was a lot of fun in downtown Victoria, a lot of, mostly local runners. But yes, it was a great, great attendance for that as well. We do have continued local support for Boot Fest. We've been voted the best festival by the Victoria Advocate Best of the Best, going since, since after the 2012 events, the 2013 awards, and so hoping to achieve that distinction again this year. And sponsorships were at a healthy number this year, cash sponsor, cash sponsorships above 53,000, in-kind at 57,000. And that was down a bit because of course the fireworks and, you know, the, we were unable to fire those off this year. Did a great job filling volunteer spots, the Kids Corral, we did go an hour later in the Kids Corral and it was completely filled, all the volunteer spots. Bridgette had more than she knew what to do with, people were still calling the week of, and we were filled up. So did, had a great support from our community and we really appreciate the volunteer support we got. Our occupancy was a, we saw a healthy spike there on Boot Fest weekend. As you see, 2017 was of course higher. You saw first weekend in September, really that, and that, those were mostly Hurricane Harvey related stays. So Boot Fest 2017, you know, we were having trouble finding rooms for the softball teams and things like that because you're at over 80% occupancy. This year, between 60 and 65%, so, or 65 and 70, excuse me, so a, a great healthy percentage and you see a boost there for on Boot Fest weekend. This is our, the financial figures for Boot Fest 2018. Our revenue was $160,964 and our expenses were $241,047. That did have an impact of minus $80,083. That was, come from the Boot Fest Reserve Fund, which if you see at this time, is still standing at $114,169. The plan for 2019 is to fund Boot Fest from that reserve fund still, and the date of the festival would be, will be October 4th through 5th, 2019. And at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions.
You thinking any major changes for next year or too early?
I, you know, we really liked the, the music configuration. We thought that was, so we're going to explore that further. You know, those, those tribute bands were very, were great, they were really affordable. It's a, it's a, you know, you got to make sure you find a good quality ones though. There's a lot of tribute bands out there where, you know, we were very, very lucky to have such great tribute bands who really had a wonderful talent and were very affordable. So that was, you know, we were able to save a little money on the main stage while still bringing out a great crowd on Friday night. So yes, we're definitely exploring that for 2019 again.
Think he set an expectation. So, yeah, if you do it again, you might have even better next year.
We saw, we saw, we heard quite a bit from people who said they'd never been to Boot Fest before and they're coming this year. So we're definitely looking at that possibility again.
It was fun. I enjoyed it. I don't know who all went. I know, it was great.
I noticed that some of the vendors didn't report their sales. Is that part of our contract with the vendors?
That is not a part of a contract with the vendor, no, sir. We don't have, we have explored that possibility before. You know, most of the food vendors do respond and the, about half of them called, respond through email. I, I, I can count on one hand the number of vendors who've just explicitly told me, no, I'm not comfortable doing that. And I'm sure to communicate with them that we don't, you know, we don't reveal their individual, you know, how they do, we just report it as an average. So most are comfortable with that. Like, like I mentioned, there's very few who have explicitly told me they're not comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Joel, those, those numbers, the, those are the high points, evening time?
Yes, sir.
So they don't account for daytime, families, things of that nature that are, that are there throughout the entire day?
You can, you can make an argument, there's a, a good number of people who do come, you know, Saturday just with their families and head out before the big, big concert starts. So those are very conservative estimates. Yes, sir.
Very good. I can't wait to see what happens next year.
Thank you.
I'll be there. We, we do have one other item the city manager just reminded me of. Please do, go right ahead.
If you don't, if you don't mind, we're, we've just finalized it this afternoon with Tech Todd and Mr. Marshall's back in the back, but we received notice yesterday that they are ready to put the MLK Junior signs up on the loop. And so we're going to have a dedication on January 15th at 10 o'clock at the Tech Todd office on 59. But I'll send that out, so I see people taking notes, we'll get that out, we just haven't had a chance to work, work that up yet, but that is coming on January 15th. The notable thing about that day is that is actually Mr. King's birthday. So, you know, the holiday is actually the, I think the Monday following his birthday, so the holiday would be on the 21st, but the 15th is actually his birthday. So I think that visiting with Mr. Marshall, it, you know, feel like it's a good day and good time to do that. So we'll get that done. It's been a long year on working on it, so, but I'm sure to Mr. Marshall, it's been several years working on it, so, but it's, it's a great thing for the community.
I look forward to it.
Party.
Okay, and you'll send an email?
I, I will send notice. And then we'll also do, working with Tech Todd on press releases on the event on that day. So we're, we're just now starting to talk about it this afternoon, so.
Okay. Any further business? None? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.